The time is now seven o'clock, and I would like to call to order the Beloit City Council meeting at this time. May we have a roll call, please?
Roll call shows all councilors present.
Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. Will you all stand, please?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
The next item on the agenda, Special Order of the Day and Announcements. Item 3A is Landmark Commission and Preservation Activities Report 2010, given by Chairman Rick McGrath.
Hello. I understand that you have this in your information packets. I guess it's not loaded onto the computer, so I'm just going to read from the same presentation that you have in front of you. Thank you for letting us, letting me, present to you. I have Lynette Johnson, who is the co-chair with us today. I'm just going to read from the notes. I would like to, if I may, I brought a little something, if I could. I don't know if I have enough copies. The presentation kind of goes through some of the numbers. I think that kind of gives a little bit of the backstory, as far as what we've been doing over the last year. So, this annual report is provided in accordance to Section 32.05, Section 10 of the Historic Preservation Ordinance. Section 32.05, Section 10 requires the Landmark Commission report its activities to the council each year. Same section of the Historic Preservation Ordinance states, "Any alterations of designated landmarks, landmark sites, or structures within the historic district in the city shall first require a certificate of approprieness," a COA. I am the chair. Lynette Johnson, co-chair, Sandra Williams, Marjorie Fizell, Donna Johnson, Steve Ulmer, and City Councilor Charles Haynes. The Landmark Commission met six times in 2010 and reviewed certificates of appropriance. Only six times was a thin year, as you might imagine, not a whole lot of construction going on, or home renovation in the community this last year. Of the COAs, 41 applications were processed in 2010, 25, or 61 percent were staff-approved, the rest coming before the commission. Of the COAs, additions, new constructions, zero; chimney and tuck pointing, three; demolitions, three, and those were garages. Fences and retaining walls, two; garage repair, reconstruction, three. Continuing, gutters, fascia, soffit, two; handrails and porches, three; historic plaques, none this year, unfortunately. Local landmark designations, none. Ramp sidewalk steps, pavement, two; roof repair replacements, nineteen. Signs miscellaneous items, six; siding, two; windows and doors, five. Additional commission activities, we supported historic preservation during the Beloit Heritage Days in September. On that sheet that I sent you, we cosponsored three speaker presentations, one on window restoration, one on masonry restoration, and one on, for homeowners, on how to apply for Wisconsin Historic House Property Tax Credits. And we also provided a guided walking tour of the College Park Historic District. The Landmark Commission currently monitors 115 properties in the Bluff Street District, 181 in the College Park District, four properties in, on the Merrill Street District, on the west side, over by the high school, and 42 individually listed landmarks. On the sheet that I provided you, a couple things that I think are noteworthy is the ongoing demolitions, or requests for demolitions. There was a house, the house on Park was slated for, the homeowner was pursuing demolition a little over a year ago. Through some grassroots networking, we found a, found someone willing to purchase the home and renovate it, and it's now for sale. It's a beautiful home, I've been inside it, and they've done a wonderful job. The second house over on Church Street, the homeowner, First Khan, wanted to pursue demolition. The neighborhood came together and courted three different afternoons where people showed up and helped them clean out that house and prepare it for alternate uses. One of those three occasions was, we must have had over 30 college kids from the college show up and en masse just clean that sucker out, moved it all out to the garage, or out to the dumpster, and the church was very grateful for the work that the neighborhood came together for, to provide them, and they have since removed the COA or demolition request. Some of the ongoing issues we're still dealing with is demolition by neglect. We would appreciate the city council's help in that regard, as well as just education, awareness raising, and I think there was a third point on there, and I forget what that is. But, thank you very much. Any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Counselor DeForest?
Yes, thank you, Mr. McGrath. I was wondering what was done to raise awareness of Wisconsin's historic home tax credit? Have you kind of mass blanketed so that all of the homeowners know that that's available to them?
Yeah, we're a little challenged. We are trying to, that's one of our key focuses, is just letting people know that this is available to them. The state of Wisconsin has this, it's a 25 percent tax credit. If you live in the historic district, you still need to apply, your project still needs to qualify, but it is available to you. And a lot of people don't know that it's available. It's been years since anyone from Beloit has, has taken advantage of that program, and it is not difficult to do.
Is there more that you can do as a commission, though, to help people be aware of it and to help them apply?
Well, at Heritage Days last year, we had a speaker come in and present that. We might have had maybe 35 people in the room. It's worth doing again. We will do that again this Heritage Days. We have, we have, the Neighborhood Association, Beloit NPA, has a website, and we talk about it on there. It's not currently available on the city website, maybe that's something that we can, can do.
That's a good idea, like a link on our site to the application itself?
Yeah, yeah.
That be all?
Great, no, that's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Johns?
Mr. McGrath?
Ms. McGrath.
I just don't have any questions, I just wanted to take a moment to commend you and the commission for all of the work that you guys have done to get us nationally recognized with this old house, so I just wanted to acknowledge that and congratulate you on that.
That was very nice, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other questions? No, thank you very much. Item four, public hearings. Item 4A, please.
Proposed ordinance to amend Sections Table 1.6, excuse me, 6.1-1 and 6.2-11A of the zoning ordinance, Chapter 19 of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit relating to residential uses in the Central Business District. They're requesting a first and second reading, and the Plan Commission recommended approval five to zero.
Thank you. Mrs. Christiansen, please.
Currently in the zoning ordinance, both single-family attached dwellings and multifamily dwellings are permitted by right in the Central Business District 1 and 2 when located above the ground floor. However, two family dwellings are prohibited in Central Business District 1 and a conditional use in Central Business District 2. This goes contrary to what we're trying to do with upper-floor housing. It actually kind of conflicts with the current language, which says that residential uses are allowed in the Central Business District only when located above the ground floor, but there was a different classification in the use table, so what this ordinance would do would allow for upper-floor housing in the Central Business District. Kathleen is very supportive of this, to try to make it more, make it easier for businesses to develop that housing above ground level, and this would allow essentially someone to have just two apartments, because the way this was written, you could have one, you could have more than two, but you couldn't have exactly two. And there are some buildings downtown that can only accommodate two dwellings, so this would allow the upper-floor housing. And Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at its last meeting, no one came and attended this public hearing, and they recommended unanimously support for this ordinance amendment.
Thank you. I would now like to open a public hearing on item 4A. Is there anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Anyone wishing to speak on item 4A? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at this time. Any councilor?
I'd move that we suspend the rules and proceed to action on the merits, Mr. President.
Motion by Vanda Bogart to suspend the rules, and second by Haynes. All those in favor suspending the rules, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we suspend the rules now to the merits. Motion by DeForest, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, before he passes 7-0. Item 4B, please.
Proposed ordinance amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from C1 Office District to C2 Neighborhood Commercial District for the property located at 412 Liberty Avenue. First reading, the Plan Commission recommended approval three to two.
Mrs. Christiansen, please.
The owner and operator of Liberty Mart, which is located at 412 Liberty, has applied for the rezoning from C1 Office to C2 Neighborhood Commercial. On January 25th of last year, the city council revoked the applicant's alcohol beverage license. Because a year has passed, he is eligible to apply for a new license, however, his use was non-conforming in that district, and since the alcohol use was gone, he basically needs to come into conformance with code. In order to do that, he needs either C2 or C3 zoning. The comprehensive plan shows this parcel to be recommended for neighborhood commercial uses and a zoning district classification of C2, so he applied for the C2. The C2 in and of itself does not allow the alcohol sales, it really just brings it in conformance with the comprehensive plan. He would still need a conditional use to proceed to alcohol sales, but this would be the first needed step to even have the alcohol sales. Plan Commission held a public hearing at their last meeting, there were no residents at the meeting, we've heard from residents since that they're opposed to the alcohol use, but there still was a vote, a split vote of three to two on this item. Two of the board members felt like this was just the first step to alcohol sales, and so they didn't want to take that first step, was the sense I've got, I know Heidi, if you have more to say on that, and one of the commissioners just said he thought the comp plan was wrong, so. But the three that voted for it, voted for it because this was a consistency with the comprehensive plan issue, and that this property should be zoned C2, and grocery sales isn't allowed in C1, but is allowed in C2. And so that's why the board members voted the way they did, that did vote in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? I would like to open the public hearing at this time, and ask if there's anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Anyone wishing to speak on item 4B? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4B this evening? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and entertain a motion to lay this over. Am I correct? Motion by Haynes.
Second.
Second by Dent. Counselor Vanda Bogart?
I would have a question of Ms. Christiansen, if I could, Mr. President. What sorts of other activities, Ms. Christiansen, are permitted in a C2? You referred to grocery sales, obviously gasoline and sales. What other sorts of activities are allowable? I understand he would have to come back for alcohol, but what other than that, what could he do?
Off the top of my head, I can't tell you, but I can tell you that retail sales is one category, and in the zoning ordinance, it's not allowed in C1, so it limits it to an office-type use. His grocery sales have continued over that time period, so he can continue the grocery sales. He'll just be illegal, he's legal non-conforming on the grocery sales. But if he didn't survive at that location and that building became vacant, it would, and it became vacant for over a year, having the C1 zoning would severely limit its future use. Because C1, an office building, at that location is probably not likely to happen. The thought that we had is that there was a little commercial cluster at the time that we put that on the comp plan that way, and that commercial uses that served the neighborhood, you know, would be a potential good use at that location, you know, some smaller type uses that would serve the neighborhood. And that's why we had recommended the neighborhood commercial on the comp plan, and that's where that C2 zoning would fit into, are those kind of uses.
So, from your observation, this changes the underlying zoning, if there are any disputes or disagreements, that comes later in the process when we deal with the issue of alcohol sales as an addition to the underlying zoning. Is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Anything else? Any other councilor have any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those, call for the vote, all those in favor laying this over, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 5, citizens' participation. We have come to a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward and speak. I would ask you, when I call your name, there are a couple people that filled out the sheets here, call your name if you could come forward, state your name and address. If you didn't get a chance to fill out the sheet, we'd ask you to do the same. The councilors will not act on your information this evening. If it's something that needs more information, we'll point you to the department, and we'll take it from there. The first person that we have is Howard Erickson.
Well, I'll just be real brief here. When I read in the paper last Friday, you were going to vote or consider the renaming of the bridge, Henry Avenue Bridge, I just felt compelled to come and at least say a couple of things. I think it's a great tribute to one of Beloit's true heroes, and he's certainly been one of mine. And I just want to say that I've had the good fortune to know Ken and Diane for about 30 years, been good friends, and I've watched them grow their family and grow their business, and I've watched them, you know, partner in the community of Beloit. You know, words can't describe my love for them and their family and what they've done personally, and how they've partnered with others in the community I grew up in. So, I want to thank you for considering that, it's well-deserved, and to close out, I can remember so many things that man said over the years, and a couple of quotes. One time he said to me personally, we were going somewhere, and he said, "You know, Howard, someday, I'm going to really give back to my community." It was quite profound, and I'll never forget it, and he did. And a few of us were in the dark, dirty bowls of Fairbanks Morse Company one time, and we were down there looking through, it was pathetic to look at it, but here he is. "This is what we're going to do here, the elevator will be over there, and then the stairwell will be over here, going up to the third floor, we'll have a couple boardrooms on either side, and our offices, and I'll look over the river." And I mean, he did it, he transformed it. I just, it was so interesting to watch that and listen to him. And then one day, a bunch of us were on some Harleys, and we took a ride, and we ended up in the Afton Pits. I used to fish in there when I was a kid, and so he's describing what he's going to do with the house, and over here, we're going to dig out the lakes, we're going to put something over here, like a pavilion for corporate meetings and whatever, and sure enough, he did it. It was just amazing. I asked him one time about getting involved with another endeavor, which he later did, but he denied me three times, but he says, "Right now, Howard, I'm really focused on bringing jobs to Beloit and fixing up some of these old buildings." You know, it was just fascinating, you know, when you know somebody and you get to see the reality of it later. And the last one, I was in his office one day, and for no other reason, just to visit, that's the way it was with him, and all of a sudden, out comes these big plans, he says, "Howard, what do you think of this?" And I looked at him, "My God." He said, "You grew up in Beloit, this is what we ought to do with the Beloit Mall." I just flabbergasted. So, anyway, it goes on and on and on, and some of you know that, but I just had that great distinction of being one of a number of friends that watched him and watched his life. I miss him, and he had a great vision for change and the passion and ability to get things done, so his legacy certainly has been carried on with Diane and his family and what they're doing, and he's a hero for Beloit, and I just want you to know, I'm proud of you for taking this up, and I hope the vote goes away, I'd like to see it go, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one is Mr. Dennis Murphy.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Murphy, 1107 Harrison Avenue here in Beloit, and I'm here just to express gratitude to councilors and to our city workers and our police and our teachers. I chose to live in Beloit. I moved here in 1973 from Dixon, Illinois via Colorado Springs, and I think Beloit is a remarkable town, and the previous speaker alluded to some remarkable situations, but of recent, there's been a fair amount of employee, public employee bashing, and I'm here to tell you, I'm proud of Beloit in my interactions with people in Beloit and workers. I've served with Norm, Neighborhood Watch, I've had the opportunity to volunteer like many of you had, I've had dealings in our neighborhood, because we stayed in our neighborhood, we wanted to stay in our neighborhood, and there are people in Beloit who've referred to our house as being in a derogatory part of Beloit, and I resent that, but they're entitled to their opinion. And you know what? We pay our bills, we save a little money, and now people say, "You're a retired teacher, I don't like what you have." Well, that's neither here nor there, but I've had the occasion to deal with code enforcement people, and they do a remarkable job, and they're doing it under adverse and serious financial restraints, fixable restraints, in my economic opinion, but I won't get into that, but I'm just here to say thank you, and I know we're headed into a difficult time, and the voters spoke in November, and rest your heart, they're going to speak again. So, thank you, and I'm proud to be a Beloit'er.
Thank you, thank you very much. Anyone else would like to speak on the citizens' participation? Seeing no one else, I would like to close the citizens' participation at this time, and move to item 6, which is the consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the council members are requested, in which event, the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda. Is there any councilor wishing to remove anything from consent agenda at this time? Seeing none, the consent agenda is items 6A through 6F. Is there a motion for approval?
Second.
Motion by Johns, second by Noonan. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 7A, please.
Proposed ordinance to repeal and recreate Section 1.58 to amend Sections 13.015-4, 13.25-1, 13.25-2, sub B, 13.26, 15.03, sub 7, 25.04, sub 1, sub D, 25.04, sub 4, sub B, 12, and 13, and 25.04, sub 4, sub C, 25.07, and 29.56, sub 2, of the Code of General Ordinances of the City of Beloit pertaining to the municipal code.
Thank you.
I'm going to apologize for that title.
Mrs. Chris, please.
On January 1st, 2011, the Municipal Court Reform and Restructuring Act went into effect. It requires very little on the part of the City of Beloit's Municipal Court, we operate a fairly comprehensive court. It did require one significant change, that amending the term of the municipal court judge from two years to four years. In the process of looking at our municipal court ordinance, there's a number of name changes and statute changes that have been affected over the last, I think it's 17 years that the court's been in session, so this is just an attempt to try to make that one change about the municipal court judge's term, and then also to clean up the language in the code. So, I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Any question? Counselor DeForest?
Do you have a question about the Section 3, the forfeiture penalty? There's, there's been quite a bit crossed out regarding, related to payment of the judgment and applicable court costs and fees and surcharges, and it's been substituted with shall be governed by Chapter 800 of the Wisconsin statutes. Could you tell us a little bit about what's included in that statute that's different from what we had previously, please?
It's virtually the same information. Chapter 800 governs municipal court procedures, and so the attempt was to point everybody to the one area that affects that particular topic. So, what I was trying to do is just, rather than rewrite the statute, and then every time the statute changes, have to come back, we reference the code in this, or the state statute, in our code to avoid that.
Just to clarify, though, you're saying that not much has changed, though?
Can you, can you point me to where you're talking about?
Sure. It's in Section 3, paragraph, wait, sorry, I'm looking electronically, so I have to look the big picture.
There are two different, there was the ordinance itself, which the first section, I had a separate red line version, so you could see, because we repealed and recreated in an attempt to be open with what changes were being made, I had a separate red line. Are you referring to that document or the ordinance itself?
It's actually a blue line, if that makes a difference, on my electronic copy.
Okay.
It's Section 13.25.
On page 3?
And, I'm sorry, it's electronic for me, so I don't have.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, you're talking, I've crossed out maybe suspended by sentencing court for not more than 60 days. That is what we do, it's under Chapter 800, that language there. Any person 18 years of age or older who shall fail to pay the amount of the forfeiture, court costs, and penalty assessment, some other language, may be imprisoned until such forfeiture costs have been paid. That's in the state statute. Nothing has changed.
And that's required by the Wisconsin State Statutes?
It is the state statute, yeah.
All right, thank you.
What else have any questions, comments? No, is there a motion to suspend the rules? Is there a second? Motion by Johns, second by Dent, to suspend the rules. Counselor DeForest?
Sorry.
It's okay.
I have one more question, and forgive my ignorance, I thought there was some legislation passed recently that if a person was indigent in some way, if they couldn't afford to pay for fines or court costs or penalties, that there was a way for them to avoid this penalty of imprisonment. Is that correct?
That's under Chapter 800. If someone can't pay, they come before the court for either installment payment agreement or some other alternative ways to make payment, so that's under Chapter 800.
All right, thank you.
It's okay. I have a spin motion and second to suspend the rules. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, suspend the rules down to the merits of the case.
Move approval of 7A, Mr. President.
Motion by Vanda Bogart, second by Johns. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 7-0. Item 8, is appointments, there are none. Item 9, is. Item eight is appointments. There are none. Item nine is councillor activities and upcoming events. Counselor Noonan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to take this opportunity to remind folks as construction season is now officially kicking off, that all the businesses in that area will be open and available. And I'm sure they will be very happy to see your happy, smiley faces. Thank you.
Counselor Johns.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two quick things. I wanted to give a quick thank you to the Wisconsin Property Owners League for hosting a candidate forum. This past Monday, it was a great opportunity to meet my fellow candidates. So thank you for all those that made that possible. And also wanted to remind everyone that if you missed it this past weekend, Beloit Memorial High School is putting on Hairspray the Musical. So if you missed it last weekend, please try to get out there this weekend. They put a lot of work into it, and it's a really, really great performance. So, thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Haynes?
I have nothing to add.
Counselor DeForest?
I'd like to first of all, express my condolences to Tina Lomax's family. And certainly she'll be missed. She was a fantastic park supervisor. And so just would like to, to share those thoughts with her family and friends. And then shifting gears a little bit on a happy note, I'd like to thank and congratulate Ed Ganzer, who is our Director of Water Resources, on his retirement. He's done a fantastic job in that division. And I want to thank him personally for his efforts and tell him to enjoy his wonderful retirement. Thank you.
Counselor Ench?
Uh, nothing.
Counselor Vanda Bogart?
Uh, nothing either. All right. I would like to also echo Counselor DeForest's statement as it relates to Tina Lomax. I think throughout the years, if you've been in any park, you've probably seen Tina in there. And if you've been doing anything wrong in any park, I'm sure you had a conversation with Tina. It didn't matter who you were. I think the paper did it, said it so well, that Tina would give her own mother a ticket in the park if she was doing something wrong. And I think that shows the dedication of this individual. I had the pleasure of growing up around Tina Lomax. Yeah. I didn't get one of the tickets, but I grew up, yeah, I, yeah, I grew up, I grew up around her. She lived across the street from my grandmother. And so I graduated with her daughter. But so I had the opportunity of not only getting yelled at by Tina in the parks, but also on Gerald Avenue as a little young man. So our condolences to the family. She would surely be missed. And I think our parks are better because we had Tina doing what she did best. With that, the next item is item 10, City Manager's Presentation. City Manager, our...
Thank you, Council President. As we do every year, we've prepared an annual report to the community that focuses on accomplishments for 2010, talking about mostly infrastructure upgrades, facility enhancements, economic development projects. Talks a little bit then about 2011. I was wondering if we could, if I could ask the clerk to hit some of the lights there. I think they can pick that up okay on cable, so we can, everybody can see it. That was an improvement. That was much better. I think we're good there. Everybody in the room can see that all right. All right, let's get started. I think the story of Beloit in 2010 was how despite a continuing weak economy, we were able to move forward with our program to use sustainable public policy, to continue infrastructure upgrades, even some economic development projects, and continue moving the City of Beloit forward and, and continuing the transition to a high-quality community in the 21st century. And as I've been making this presentation, I've been adding a point here that you've seen a lot of things happen in the city in the last year. And in many respects, that's because cities run counter cyclical to the private sector economy. So while the private sector economy was weak and was in recession, although the economists are telling us we were, we were, we were out of the technical recession by 2010, the cities were getting more money made available through states and federal grants and through our TIP resources. So we had a combination of projects that had been in the planning stages for a number of years, plus projects that were getting additional grant assistance being made available to stimulate the economy. And that's one of the reasons there were a number of things completed last year. And as we go through this thing tonight, you'll see that many of these projects were either 100% grant funded or were funded with a combination of grants and TIP increment. Not a lot of the projects were funded with local tax revenues. We have to revisit the city's strategic plan each year when we do this report. The strategic plan is a living, working document in Beloit. It's the first step in the budget process every year. And as you'll see by looking at the vision and mission statements up on the screen, we live sustainability. It's built right into our vision for the community. It's a part of the mission statement. And as we move into the five key goals that we use to accomplish that mission, you'll see once again sustainability and sustainable public policy repeated continually throughout those goals. And every service, every facility we operate, every improvement project we undertake, every economic development recruitment will fall or will fit within one of these five key goals that articulate the city's annual mission. And in addition to these goals, there are a number of objectives that are set by each department and, and division in the city, and then, of course, approved by city council in the final draft of the plan. So let's talk about some of the things that happened this year. We're very pleased to finally complete the downtown transfer station. This is another excellent example of a sustainable project. We used photographs of the two old train stations that sat downtown for a number of decades. Those were provided to the designer. And a lot of the elements of this building tie us back to those heritage structures, which no longer exist in the city. In fact, there are some design elements from the old station that's set where the Beloit Daily News building is now that were actually put into the building. We used a geothermal heating cooling system, which will be highly energy efficient, very high-quality materials. So this building should be very serviceable and last the community for many decades into the future. Once again, this was a project that was 100% grant funded. The city spent some local funds a few years ago, doing some master planning and some site renderings for various locations. But this particular project was grant funded. And of course, it will serve the public transit system in the city, as noted, for hopefully many decades into the future. Another very nice sustainable project was the State Line Prairie Restoration Area. This was one of the worst brownfield sites that the city has come across. And this was also a nice partnership. We collaborated with South Beloit. They bought the portion of the site, which is in Illinois. We purchased the piece in Wisconsin. And we got good collaboration from the property owner, the Bear family, which bought the property after the fact, so to speak, helped. They put up $50,000 for the cleanup and donated the property. The site's been cleaned, restored. The prairie is planted. There's walkways through the site. And this will become a permanent part of the green belt, which continues to expand up along the Turtle Creek area. We have not yet scheduled a ribbon cutting or dedication for this. We're waiting until the site restoration advances. We'd like to get the prairie up before we do that, but maybe this year. Canoe kayak launch, another exciting project downtown. This came out of some brainstorming sessions near the end of the old parking deck removal process. The city had a nice project for the east bank, but really no plans for how to restore the west bank. We started talking about what kind of activity generators we could use in downtown. And we wanted to do something that would be attractive. And as you look at the screen here, you can see the landscaping clusters on each end. I'm gonna hit those briefly with the laser, but they're, we're a little bit far away. And of course, the decorative stone through the middle. And of course, the thing actually works. A lot of canoers and kayakers launch off here. And another nice thing, in addition to creating the activity downtown, is the fact that there really is no way to get a boat into the lower reaches of the river below the dam. So this is a real great way to put paddlecraft on this water, and there's no parboat traffic to interfere with that. So we're anticipating that that will grow. And as so often happens when you build infrastructure of this sort, as they say, they will come. And that's exactly what happened. Paddle and Trail is now open on, just on West Grand Avenue, literally contiguous to the new kayak canoe launch site. We'll talk a little more about this project later. We also completed the important Gateway Boulevard extension this summer, had the dedication in July. This, of course, is the main industrial street to serve the new Cary campus. It also tied the Gateway Business Park through to the Interstate 43 interchange. And it opened up a lot more land for development. We're in, what we think now are the final stages of negotiation for the first industrial user that'll be located along the new part of Gateway Boulevard. And hopefully, that project will be ready for presentation to council during the month of April. Public Street was redone this year. Gateway Boulevard was about 60% grant funded. 40% of it was paid for with TIP 10 funds from the Gateway TIP District. Public Street was paid for, as with most of the improvements downtown, with the downtown, which is TID 5 incremental revenues. Highway 51 was probably the big signature project last year. Once again, this project was 100% federal and state grant funded. This is a $3 million improvement through the heart of the city. And the City of Beloit never wrote a check for this project. As you can see, Beloit 2020, our city center partner got involved. They brought in their designer, upgraded the design of the road, put in the center median, the additional landscaping. Of course, we have our decorative lighting. And this has had the effect, I think, of really extending the park to the east side of the roadway, because the roadway now integrates and looks like a park boulevard. So the look has been great. We're gonna see the trees for the first time this spring. They were already dormant when they were planted last fall. So we're excited to see how this comes out in the spring. These are just some additional street improvements. I'm not gonna go through all of them. Of significance probably here would be the I-90 Industrial Park. Those streets were 35-plus years old. We did a batch of them this year. And the rest of them are scheduled for 2011. Some additional projects, again, most of this is TIP-related work. The top slides are the Fourth Street parking lot, once again, from a sustainability perspective. The first LED streetlights that the city installed were in this parking lot. The energy consumption from LED streetlights is a fraction of what it is from any other kind of streetlight option or lighting medium that you can use. We're taking a look at these. I was at a conference last week and learned that the City of Kenosha has found a replacement head. And they've actually started replacing some of their existing fixtures with LED heads. As you know, we did that with traffic signals several years ago. We've had great success with that. It's cut our costs dramatically. And as soon as the technology gets there, the cost benefit works for us, we hope to do more LED streetlights as well. Bottom right are the wayfinding signs. This project is still underway. We left one facility off, and we're revamping a couple of the signs. And we're moving a couple, and we still have a few to install. So that project will be finished in the spring. And on the left is Historic Horse White Park. This is a very significant heritage facility for the City of Beloit. It anchors the east end of downtown, as well as the College District. And this was the original park in the City of Beloit. This predates the Civil War. It started as the city cemetery in the 1830s. And I believe in the late 1840s, early 50s, was converted into a city park. And it's been here all that time. So a lot of work has been done. We redid the band shelf a few years ago. The Horse White Monument was rebuilt. Much of the landscaping has been redone, some of the walkway work. And this year, 2010, we put, replaced the old Cobra Head streetlights that someone had put in there, probably back in the 60s. And those were replaced with period correct historic lighting throughout the park. And there will be a little bit of additional work done there in future years as funds are available. Utility improvements, we've got three big projects. These are all underway. The biggest project is the Settlement Ponds, the third item. You can see that on the left. Those are in the Kruger Haskell Golf Course. I believe all the structural work is now complete, or very close to being complete. We're gonna be restoring, pardon me, restoring the site as soon as possible, as soon as the weather breaks and allows us to get in there and work. And we'll try to get the grass up and get all of the course open as quickly as possible. But the golf course will be opening as soon as weather permits, either later this month or very early in April, as we normally do. And we'll do a workaround there, so people can continue to play on the course. Economic development, a lot of exciting things happened in 2010 and are happening in 2011. And this is despite the continued general weakness in the economy. Kettle Foods announced that they were doubling their production capacity in Beloit, adding another eight lines. And this is basically the kettle production facility for the east coast. The company looked at four or five different states when they did this site selection work. Once again, the City of Beloit has worked very closely with Kettle for a number of years. They were very happy here. We made them a very, very attractive incentive package that they couldn't beat anywhere else. And so we actually made it more advantageous for Kettle to stay here, produce here, create the jobs here, and then ship their product to the east coast. There will also be a significant warehouse addition going on the building behind Kettle Chips. And that likely will also start this year as well, because they need more distribution space to accommodate this. Our construction in perpetuity continues at the Hampton Inn site, at Cranston and Milwaukee. There's a lot been done since this photograph was taken. We still do not have a completion date from the owners, but they are continuing to work the project. And so we're hopeful that that will get built this year. O'Reilly Auto Parts, a new retail store. O'Reilly wanted to enter the market, came into the city, bought a very nice parcel out by Morgan Square. And as you can see from this photograph by looking at the building, in order to meet the city's architectural and site review codes, did a very nice job, very high-quality brick masonry building and a fully landscaped site. So that's a nice addition to the city, and we welcome them to Beloit. Frito Lay, we interact with them on a regular basis. They constantly bid on new production lines and, and new product production. And they bid against the other manufacturing plants in the Frito system. And they've invested heavily in sustainability, brought in their own full-time sustainability director just for the Beloit facility. And in 2010, they received a gold lead certification from the Green Building Council. That is a huge accomplishment to do that for a 35-plus-year-old production facility. So we were very, very pleased. We were included in their celebration when this was presented to them this past summer. And we hope there will be more good things coming as Frito continues to grow and expand. Neat stuff coming up in 2011. A lot of this you're familiar with. Beloit is a very, very exciting place to live, as all of you know. And you can stay busy here every weekend and most weekdays if you like. And these are just some of the things. BIF, of course, is done already. The farmer's market will be starting. And as Counselor Newham noted, we did begin work on State Street today. We're trying everything we can to get that construction done in time for the farmer's market in early June. And there will be a lot of special events along the riverfront, The Harry's Place, Friday night free concerts, visit Beloit activities that'll be going on all summer long. A lot of new projects this year. We're gonna redo Bushnell Street from Pleasant to College. Again, most of the projects you're gonna see on this list are either TIP or grant-funded. There was very little local funds in the CIP this year, in part because of the drop in our cess value. There was very little capacity to do general purpose construction. So most of these projects are, again, either TIP-related or grant-funded. State Street, we noted, is already underway. A number of small pieces of street in the downtown area, those will be bid a little bit later in the season. We've got a number of these that are left that were never done. And we want to get all of those done while the TIP District is still in effect, because the expenditure period for this TIP concludes in September of 2012. And after that, there'll be very limited resources available for infrastructure improvements in downtown. So we're gonna try to get all that work completed. Most of it this year, finish it in '12. Facade Grant Program will continue, as will the second-floor housing project. Few other street projects, Cranston Road, I mentioned earlier, the I-90 Industrial Corridor. We didn't do Cranston Road between Milwaukee and the railroad. And there's a piece of Kennedy. Both of those will be redone this year. Cranston's in design as we speak. We'll probably be bid late spring, very early summer for construction. We'll be doing some intermittent street resurfacing, and we'll also be doing our regular sidewalk repair program this season. We have some continued funding for property acquisition, demolition as needed. There'll be some more improvements in the Gateway Business Park. Some of this is actually scheduled. Some of it is contingent. But we wanted to make sure we had an appropriation. So if we get another project, we've got enough appropriation to extend the infrastructure. And we have some money in the budget, again, for sustainability projects. Council's already approved some energy efficiency projects, and we're working on implementing those at this time. Two big public safety upgrades are in the CIP. The cardiac monitor defibrillator units and the fire department have all got to be replaced. They're at the end of their lifespan. And they've all got to be done at one time. We want to make sure that all of these critical units on every piece of apparatus is exactly the same. And then all the employees are, are trained and able to use whichever one they happen to need or be affiliated with at that point in time. So those are all gonna be replaced. So those are all going to be replaced together. And finally, we have the narrowband FCC communications mandate that's actually going to begin in 2011 with funds we appropriated this year, and then the balance will be appropriated in 2012. Public Works and Transit radios are going to be updated this summer, and then in early 2012, we'll finish all the public safety departments. Rock County Emergency Communications has asked us to be done, I think, by spring of 2012 now is their date, and they want to cut over to the narrowband, and we're also switching to a digital communications format with this gear for both interoperability and future adaptability to new technologies. So that'll all be done at one time. Utility system improvements, we talked about these earlier. They're going to continue trying to finish all of these big projects this season, and hopefully we won't be revisiting those. I did mention earlier facade renovations downtown. I wanted to revisit that briefly, because it's such a significant initiative, and some of you are aware of projects we've already completed. This is that piece on West Grand Avenue. The green building on the right in the first photograph is where the new canoe kayak and bike shop paddle and trail is located there in this building, and renovation here has already started to make it look more like this. And the DBA tells me that this building has a beautiful historic facade underneath it, that someone put this board, and it's got one of those synthetic stucco products on it. And arrangements have been made to use a facade grant to get all that removed and restore the historic facade. So we're hoping that this area just west of the river will look like this by the end of the season. This is another interesting project. These properties are owned by Peter Gabriel, who has two very successful businesses in Beloit, and he's purchased these properties over the last several years. And originally, we were going to tear down the old gas station. He was going to put in a parking lot here to support a new restaurant in the historic building, and brought in a designer. The designer took one look at the site and said, "Oh, let me show you. I got these great ideas." So the designer came back with keeping this building and redoing the exterior and using that for a deli and a convenience store, which Peter wants to incorporate, putting the restaurant in the historic building and then doing these patios for outdoor seating around it. And as you can see, it was absolutely striking. This is a real good example of why you want to bring in outside designers and consultants on many of these projects, because we had looked at this thing 100 times and nobody ever saw this. We brought somebody in from outside. They took one look and said, "Oh, I can see a real, real neat project here," and so they came up with this design. Hopefully Peter will get started on that this year. Probably take a year or two to finish the whole thing, but it will eventually get done. This is St. Lawrence and Fourth Street. Sustainability energy projects, we talked earlier about some of the energy efficiency upgrades, the photovoltaic technology for City Hall and the hot water solar for Fire Department headquarters. We think we've got the final negotiations done with a consultant. We're going to get the designs done, hopefully in the next 30 to 45 days, get these bid. We need to get these projects committed by June, and we're already starting on Grinnell Hall. We're looking for some, we've got some RFPs or will have out very shortly on various components needed to upgrade the Grinnell Hall. As we've noted, that's one of the city's beautiful heritage buildings that we own. It has our very important senior services program in it, and so we need to do some energy upgrades to that building as well. Neighborhood stabilization, this is another program you're seeing going on around the city. This is 100% grant-funded. We've bought seven or eight properties, and our partners in neighborhood housing has bought several. Some were gone and had to be torn down, but we did have four nice properties on the west side we were able to remodel. Those are all available or will shortly be available for sale. We have them listed through, we have a contract with a private broker, and the phone number's on the screen, 364-5009. Ask for Vicki Genhof Johnson. If you'd like to see them, they've all been remodeled. They're all in excellent condition. It'd be great, great housing opportunities, and they're being offered at very attractive prices. We'd like to try to turn these over. As soon as we can sell them, the funds will go back into the stabilization program so we can buy more houses. And council just a few weeks ago authorized us to make a second grant application. We've applied for what we hope will be another 750 to 800,000 for the city under this particular program so that we can continue. Of course, we're buying up foreclosed properties, again, tearing down ones that are beyond repair, that are derelict, and remodeling the others, and even ones that aren't sold, we're having a pretty positive impact on those neighborhoods. Public housing, too. We've gotten a good start on this. We got a bit of a late start in the season, but kind of caught up, and that project will be continuing on in 2011, particularly finishing Phase One and then going on to Phase Two construction will be starting this summer. And these photographs illustrate one particular building show before and aftershock. As you'll recall, part of our goal here was to upgrade the exteriors of these public housing units, most of which are 35-plus years of age and have had very little done to them. We wanted to get them remodeled on the exterior so that they would be more of an asset and contribute positively to the neighborhoods where they're located. And we also needed to redo the interiors. Most of the walls needed to be removed anyway, so we were able to do substantial energy upgrades. You can see the steel, solid steel doors, new windows. We insulated all the buildings, Gold Star appliances in the kitchens. And of course, we remodeled the interiors, and I think you can see from the photograph, the buildings are Spartan, but very nice. They're clean, they've been completely redone, all of the floors. We have what I would call commercial-grade cabinets in the kitchen. They're designed for fairly heavy use and also fairly easy for us to maintain and clean between occupancies. And I will tell you, we've been getting some really higher-income people applying to live in the units now that they've all been remodeled, which certainly helps our public housing budget. And in many cases, of course, we moved existing tenants back into the units. All the existing tenants were retained, so no one, no one was forcibly removed from the public housing program. And again, we've got room, and we've been moving some new tenants in as well. So we're very pleased with the outcome to that. Once again, this was all paid for with tax credits and grant funds. There are no local tax funds in this project at all. And that concludes the program. I don't know if councillors have any questions? I know most of you are aware of this stuff, but it'll give you kind of a refresher on what we've been doing and what's planned for 2011. So thank you all very much for your kind attention.
Any other councillors have any questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you for the report. IM11, reports from boards and city officers. 11A, please.
Resolution approving a pilot agreement between the city of Beloit, the Community Development Authority, and Beloit Apartments Redevelopment Phase Two LLC.
Ms. Christiansen, please.
The Housing Authority is tax-exempt and does not pay property taxes on the property it owns and manages. However, HUD rules provide a formula by which a housing authority may choose to pay a pilot or a payment in lieu of taxes to the local municipality. The Housing Authority has traditionally paid an annual pilot to the city, which in 2010 was approximately $9,000 for all 131 units. As part of the tax credit redevelopment of 66 of the public housing units, an LLC, limited liability corporation called Beloit Apartments Redevelopment Phase Two LLC was created to lease the property for the 15-year compliance tax credit period, and with this agreement, it would be the obligation of the LLC to pay the pilot on the 66 units. And that's essentially what's before you tonight, is to approve this pilot agreement, which transfers that liability from the CDA to the LLC, who will now lease those 66 units. There was a similar agreement done for Phase One.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve IM11A? Motion by the Forest, second by Haynes. Any council discussion questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes. Seven, zero. IM11B, please.
Resolution to provide corporate guarantee to Wisconsin Community Bank for their construction loan for Phase Two of the redevelopment of 66 public housing units.
Ms. Christiansen, please.
Larry showed the wonderful pictures of Phase One, and we're already working on Phase Two. It feels like it just keeps going and going and going. We did receive tax credits for the last 66 units. Phase Two includes the 41 units at Parker Bluff, 16 scattered site, single-family homes, and then there's the sale of nine units and then the construction of nine new townhouses, townhouse units on the Parker Bluff site. The CDA has taken a number of actions on Phase Two. They have approved the fee agreement for Dimension Development. Tom Langrave and Vicki and Nikki are here tonight if you have any questions of them. They've also approved the construction manager, which is McGann Construction, and the architect is Dimension Four, and we're diligently working on this. The LLC approved the Equity Investor, which is National Equity Fund, and we received a construction loan from Wisconsin Community Bank. But one of the conditions of the construction loan is a corporate guarantee from both the CDA and the city. We took this to the CDA, and the CDA did approve that, and so the last step is to get the city council consideration of that corporate guarantee. It would be in a similar form to the one that's included in the packet, and it would be, my understanding, signed at closing of the tax credits, which we're expecting to be in the first or second week in July, and then we expect to be under construction in the summer.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval for 11B? There's second. Motion by John, second by Dan. Councillor Van de Bogart.
I have a question, Ms. Christiansen. Either you or perhaps for Mr. Langrave, in your experience, I guess Mr. Langrave particularly has more experience with this, have you ever seen the corporate guarantees acted upon or used for projects that ran into trouble? And if so, what were the circumstances, and how can we avoid that?
I haven't seen them used, and part of the, or the answer to the second part of your question is already factored into the, into the process. The general contractor has 100% payment and performance bond. We also have a contingency set up in the budget, so if we run into some unexpected issues, particularly at Parker Bluff, we've got some cushion to provide for that. The other thing that, that's probably the most significant is, unfortunately, Julie and Kathy and the Housing Authority staff are devoting a significant amount of their time and effort to get this all done. So that kind of takes them off task on other things that they, they are typically working on. But the flip side of that, which goes to also answer your question, is that they are involved. So there isn't really anything that's going to happen on this project that the city staff aren't going to be ahead of the process on. And typically, where construction projects end up running amok is when the general contractor is commissioned, they get working on it, nobody's talking to them, and then all of a sudden, there's a problem. We won't have that here because of the way that that transaction is set up. So I have little, little concern at all that that guarantee is going to be used. You also had that in place for Phase One, and we have had no, no issues, so.
Thank you. I'll sit before us.
Sorry, Tom, before you sit down. So just to clarify, any penalties incurred for not accomplishing work on deadline would be incurred by the general contractor?
The, the short answer is yes, unless there would be some assumed action on the part of the city that didn't happen. For instance, if Parker Bluff, which would require a rezoning, if the units are moved around, if that gets mired down in the city process and Julie and you aren't able to kind of get it back on track and things run past the due date, there would be a penalty, but that wouldn't be assessed to the contractor. But generally speaking, the only thing that can trigger a penalty on city issues is the zoning. And of course, like I said, Julie and her staff are on it and have been on it, so we don't envision any, any difficulties. Delays in construction that are on the contractor's side, higher costs for materials that, you know, if things come in higher than they estimated, that's part of the guarantee from the contractor, so that doesn't come back to the city.
Thank you.
Any other councillor have any question or comment? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, passes. Seven, zero. IM11C.
Thank you.
Resolution renaming the Henry Avenue Bridge as the Ken Hendricks Memorial Bridge. The Plan Commission recommended approval unanimously.
City Manager, please.
Thank you very much, Council President. It's a real pleasure this evening to be able to discuss this topic and present this option to city council. Shortly after Ken Hendricks' tragic passing, we formed a committee of a number of stakeholders representing many organizations in the city that had benefited from Ken and from Diane Hendricks and the wonderful things they were doing for our community. And we began to talk about what we could do to create some kind of memorial for Ken, particularly naming a piece of infrastructure, doing something of significance in the community that would benefit his contributions or be reflective of his contributions to the city of Beloit. At the appropriate point in that process, we contacted Diane Hendricks, who's here this evening. Thank you, Diane, very much for coming by this evening, and began to talk about some of these options and alternatives. And out of those discussions, several things evolved. The Hendricks Family Children's Garden, which is up at the new library. We ended up settling, based on the input from the family, on naming the Henry Avenue Bridge, the Ken Hendricks Memorial Bridge, specifically in the honor of Ken. And we're also working on yet another site that we hope to be able to come up with in Riverside Park for another memorial. And of course, there are other buildings and other things that have been done, the new, the former library building that was remodeled for the college, now has the Hendricks Performing Arts Center building, our name on that as well, and there are other facilities in the city. I think Howard Erickson probably said it better than I could. Howard knew Ken a lot longer than I did. He was an absolutely remarkable man. His contributions to the city of Beloit from his entrepreneurialship, his philanthropic generosity, and his love and appreciation of the arts, it was absolutely incredible. I've never seen a person more committed to a community than Ken Hendricks was to the city of Beloit, and I'm very, very pleased and thankful to say that Diane Hendricks has continued that significant legacy. Ken's genius beyond anything that I've ever seen before rested in his ability to conceptualize a space. He would walk into these old buildings, old corporate campuses, the old Beloit Mall, and he could see how you could reuse that space. I don't know anybody else anywhere in the country that's worked those miracles in a city center, and it's hard for me to describe to council and the community what the city center of Beloit would be like if Ken Hendricks had not picked up the old Beloit Corp campus and redeveloped that into the ironworks. The old mall has been redone in the Eclipse Center. Diane's done a beautiful job with that this year. The new exterior facade renovations. I can't tell you how rare it is that a community has been able to reuse a dead mall like that. That's almost unique in the United States, and because of Ken Hendricks and now Diane Hendricks, we're one of the few cities that can actually point to one and said, "Hey, we found something new and exciting and important to do with this space." The Fairbanks Morris Buildings along the river that were redone, the old Catholic High School where Head Start is located, the downtown Alliance Office Building, the Vision Beloit Facility, Ken's vision and input into that process was absolutely essential to making that a reality. I think all of these things and more certainly warrant renaming the bridge, the Ken Hendricks Memorial Bridge, and our recommendation to council will be to approve the resolution as submitted.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Sorry.
Motion by Newton, second by Haynes. Councillor discussion. Councillor Dan.
Well, I just wanted to make the observation of how ironic this is, because frankly, I'm not sure Ken would have been real comfortable with this kind of an action. You look at all the companies that he formed under, throughout his career, and almost none of them have his name on it. And just yesterday, I was talking with Tom Morgan, who's another good friend of the family, who knew Ken very well, and we were talking about this item on the agenda. Tom noted that, you know, one time I talked to Ken about that, and he said, "Tom, the only thing I want my name on is my driver's license." But whether he's comfortable with it or not, this is certainly something I can enthusiastically support, and I'm glad that we're able to do at least this much to recognize the contributions that this man has made to our community. that this man has made to our community.
Thank you. Counselor Nuno.
I'd also like to reiterate the remarks made by Mr. Erickson, Manager Art, and my fellow counselor, Marty Dench. What an incredible contribution Ken, Diane, Carla Swain, who's also here with us this evening, family and everyone on your team have done to really take the lead in building Beloit back up again and leading forward this charge of the Renaissance of this wonderful city. The number of jobs, all the projects that have been mentioned, it can never be said enough of what you have done and what you continue. Everyone for generations and generations have been great.
Counselor John.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to pass along my gratitude to the family for everything that they have given back to the community and to the residents. Families commend you on your recycling of abandoned vacant and neglected buildings. As a former Beloit Corp employee, I was glad to see that survive. There's a lot in that building that it had to offer still, so. And I just, I fear that the bridge just isn't enough. But thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, before we move to the vote, I would like to also say to Diane how you could see how excited we are about this because everyone was jumping to make the motion at the same time. So I think that shows the magnitude of our appreciation and our gratitude for everything that Ken has done for the city. Just being here and seeing what he's done, his vision had to be amazing. I think the city manager said it best, when you can look at something that no, everyone else is saying, "Well, that's nothing." And he takes nothing and turns it into something. That's just truly amazing. He was, he was determined, in my opinion, to make the city a very showcase place, and he's done just that. I didn't get a chance to know him personally. I met him a couple of times, and to me, he looks like a guy that he didn't back away from a challenge. I think he probably woke up every day looking for a challenge and saying, "What can I do? What can I do today is not enough?" So with that, I think that driving that energy has gotten the city where it is. And I think he was a true Beloit citizen. He stood for what we all should stand for, not knocking down the city, but saying, "What can we do to build it up?" I thank him for his dedication. I thank him for his many projects. There had to be times that people look at him and say, "Are you nuts? You can't do that. Are you, what are you thinking?" And he probably proved them wrong, as Howard said, you know? He would prove you wrong. I think if, if young people could learn anything from people, everyone's always looking for a hero or looking for a role model. I think if we look to this and saying, "Stop saying what you can't do and get out and do it," I think that would be the model that I think Ken would tell them to do. Don't sit back and say, "I can't do it," but get out and make it happen. So we all are greatly appreciative to the efforts, to what he's done for the city, and we want to thank your entire family for, and this is, as Heidi said, this is something simple, something small that we can do for a giant that passed this way. Any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven, zero. Item 12, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by John, second by the fourth. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.